Presentations that we've been to, I can leave. I've seen it twice now.
Free pass tonight. Okay.
I've almost got it memorized.
All right, I would like to call to order the Monday, May 5th, 13th, Planning Commission Meeting of Oregon City. So, um, is, this is my first time as Chair, okay?
You have to call roll.
So, pardon me?
We didn't call roll, so, and I, I need to call.
They never call the roll, but they do usually. If they actually want to, but we normally don't.
You know what they don't call a roll?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Every, every board is different.
Okay.
So, we can just move for the first agenda item.
Pardon me?
You can just move to start the first agenda item.
Okay, yes, let's go with the first agenda item. Presentation.
Are you?
Are we doing public comments, or?
Is he part of public comments, or is that part of this?
After you guys make a presentation, please.
Okay, so it's part of this one?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to separate.
Okay, so.
What is the presentation?
So.
Read this right here.
The, the presentation is PC 19-045 of, of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Project Zoning and Code Amendments.
All right, one second, sorry, this didn't go down before we started.
Okay.
Oh, good, they're showing movies.
I'm gonna make sure this gets on.
I brought the popcorn. Presentation, no pass on it. What are you looking for? That's it, yeah.
What I mean, true.
You were there.
Oh, here we go. Let me start. All right, thank you, Planning Commissioners, and, is it Chair Gage, or are you Vice Chair?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Gage, okay. My name's Christina Robertson Gardner, I'm a Senior Planner with Oregon City, and I've been the Project Manager of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Zoning Code Amendments. So, the goal of this evening is to kind of get the Planning Commission up to speed, kind of say what we have done, and then what we're going to be doing in the future. This will be a legislative file, which means it will go through public hearings. That will happen mid to late summer. So, when we leave here this evening, my goal is to have all the Planning Commissioners, some have been to events, some have not, to get everyone up to speed. What are the issues, what have we done to date? Are we narrowing down the things we're looking at? And then what to expect as we move forward towards the public hearing process. We don't, we're not actually, this evening, asking any questions to the Planning Commission, but feel free to provide any comments as we move forward, or at the end, we're happy to take those. But we, we don't have any specific questions we're asking or any direction right now, because we're still kind of in the middle of the process for that. So, I don't know why.
The PowerPoint is on their screen. It might be one of those buttons you have to click.
Hmm, okay.
To allow. Over here. And then that top thing above for quarter.
Okay, meeting's canceled. I can't find it.
I don't know, do you want to get him up? It was up here, now it went. So, before we start, while we're getting this together, just to provide a little context before we start, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was adopted in 2008, and it went through some legal review, and this, oh, sorry.
Christina, why is he doing that? I'm trying to remember, did the voters ever annex this in, because it hasn't, has it annexed in yet?
Some of the parcels are annexed, I can talk about that.
Yeah, I couldn't remember, I was trying to. Movie's over. Enjoyed our feed.
Is it on mute? Don't do that. Thank you for your patience during.
Is there an NBA game we can play all night?
All Tuesday. Do you want to pause for a moment? We may have to restart this computer. If you want to pause the meeting.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Okay, certainly, we'll pause the meeting.
You're supposed to push pause.
You can read the letter in front of you if you like.
Do what?
You can read this, or Mr. Eggers' letter either. Stay in silent reading like your second grade teacher.
Right, that's not, no, this is probably his presentation. Normally, he would give it to one of the people on the side there, and they would hand it to each of us, and to the attorney. But tonight, since it's just a presentation. He gives it to us to read it. It's not required reading, but it's what he addresses to us tonight after events. They make their presentation. This is something he wants to.
For technical difficulties, we are starting again.
We're starting again?
When I press play again, you can say for the record. Okay, we are, I'm gonna press play.
Okay, meeting is starting again.
Okay, all right. So, as I was saying, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was a document that was adopted in 2008. It was re-adopted by the City Commission in 2016 after some legal challenges, and it was adopted unanimously. And at this point, what planning staff and our consultants are looking at doing is how to take a document that's narrative-based with maps, and turn it into development code. So, my goal tonight is to go through a little bit of process, and then I'll hand my presentation to Elizabeth Decker. She's with Jet Planning, she's one of our consultants, and she'll kind of get into the meat of it. I have probably the first eight or nine slides to tell you about the process so far.
Thank you.
Can I ask before you go? What's the difference between a concept plan and a development plan?
That's a good question, and let me answer that, maybe while I do my presentation.
Okay.
That's a great one. Okay, so as I said, our goal tonight is to provide you background, some of our project goals and the outcomes so far, the process we've done, and then kind of our proposed map and code amendments as we are today, based on the work and the public outreach we've had to date. So, this is kind of a point in time, and then kind of we'll talk about next steps to get us to a place where we have proposed red line, code changes, and a proposed map. So, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area was added into the city's urban growth boundary in 2002 and 2004. And the urban growth boundary is region-wide. It is a urban growth boundary that is actually administered through Metro on behalf of the three counties and the cities. So, the three counties and the cities, they are involved in conversations about the urban growth boundary, but Metro is actually the implementing entity that, that has the control of the urban growth boundary. And so, in 2002 and 2004, through interaction with all, with this Oregon City and Clackamas County, we have three concept plan areas that were brought in. Park Place, Beaver Creek, and South End Road. These concept plans, when you add new land into an urban growth boundary, there is an understanding that urban growth boundaries are created to allow a 20-year supply of housing, but then also to ensure that when the land is actually developed, it's developed to a sufficient urban standard, so we don't have to come back in, you know, a very short time to expand it again. So, it's kind of like, when you do expand, have it a sufficient urban density, so we can keep the urban growth boundary tight enough to allow 20 years of redevelopment opportunity, but not, but not coming back all the time, because we are, we're too dense, we were too, we're not dense enough to, to allow, really, what I consider is prudent use of our land. And so, this area where we are talking about this evening is the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. It's 453 acres that was added in, as well as some areas that were already in the old 1980 urban growth boundary, but it was on the east side of Beaver Creek Road. So, we do have a couple of parcels that were added into 1980 urban growth boundary, and they were kind of brought into the whole concept plan area, because it didn't make sense to plan new areas and then just have these kind of odd parcels on the east side. So, all three concept plans did that. They kind of took some periphery zones, periphery areas that were in the older urban growth boundary and made like a coherent area. And we did our concept planning in that coherent area. So, the question is, what is the difference between a concept plan and a development plan or a master plan? If you want to think of it in the, the, the kind of 20,000, 10,000, 5,000-feet way of thinking about it, the concept plan is really the watercolor picture. It's this big question of how do we bring densities into an area that's going to be developing at the urban fringe? How do we bring infrastructure into an area that's developing at the urban fringe? And then, how do we ensure that it is integrated into the city? So, it is not down to a specific, you know, tax lot parcel basis like a development application. So, major roads are identified, but minor roads or smaller roads that might be done in a subdivision or not. So, that local street network is, we're still up high. So, what's our major street network? Generally, what are the uses that we see in the zone? Based on the density of uses, are our utility master plans up to date? Do we need to amend those? Do we need to build new infrastructure? Like, do we need a new pump station or a new reservoir, for instance? So, that was the kind of analysis that was done during the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. So, it's at that concept plan area, which is kind of proof of concept of looking at the order of magnitude numbers, looking at, do we need to amend our capital improvement project plan? Do we need to, how do we make sure that we, as we grow, we can provide those utilities as development happens? And if we need to rearrange projects, or if we need to add projects, this is the time to do it. So, the concept plan is exactly that. Once it's adopted, then you actually will have to implement it, which is what we're doing for the, implementing in the planning sense, the zoning sense. So, right now, if you are not inside the city limits, you have your county zone, but you don't have a comprehensive plan designation, because you're in that new area. So, one goal is to make sure we have comprehensive plan map designations for all properties that are inside the urban growth boundary. So, that could be, it could be a county property, but you know what your zone will be at the time you annex eventually. And if you're inside the city limits and you have a zone, we can take a look in this situation, say, well, do you have the right zone for the concept plan? So, the difference between a concept plan and maybe a development agreement or master plan is that's further down in the, kind of, the refinement. So, a development agreement is actually an agreement between the city and a developer who wants to actually develop something. So, they may say to the city, well, I have 300 acres, I want to do a six-phase development, I want to do infrastructure at these different ways, some phases I'll, I might push off some infrastructures for a later phase, or I may build the park, but I would like to have system development fees, you know, recouped. That's that larger development agreement for a specific development or phase of developments. And so, that is after a site's been rezoned, and after a concept plan, big picture, it's that next refinement. Or a development application would be like a subdivision application, or a site plan and design review, which could be a byright application that's done at a staff level, that's clear and objective standards. And so, they use the code that's been adopted to make sure that what's developed, you know, implements the vision. So, what we're looking at is how to write code that can implement the vision through these one-off development applications. So, that's kind of where we're at, the differences. We're trying to write code to get us from the watercolor picture to that land use notice sign in the future with a development application, and what codes need to be amended to get us to that, that, that stage. So, in general, the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan was really seen as a hybrid plan. It has an employment campus north of Loder Road, and I'll show you the map after this slide. Mixed-use districts along Beaver Creek Road. So, this is really this, this combination of mixed-use, could be housing, it could be retail, and it can be jobs. It could be kind of more employment-based. Two kind of mixed-use residential neighborhoods. So, that could be, you know, multifamily with a little bit of commercial, or, you know, some more commercial with a little bit of multifamily. So, it's kind of looking at what's the ratio of those different uses. And then, really, it has between 1,000 and 1,600 housing units, though I think we're targeting definitely more to the lower 1,000. And then, up to 5,000 jobs for a complete build-out. So, that's another thing we're really tasking our consultant is, with the zones we have to date, are there zones that, I mean, are there permitted uses in zones that may not be, have a high opportunity to have like a good density of jobs? Then maybe those might not be permitted in this area. Or maybe there's, you know, there's definitely types of uses that are really jobs-intensive, and maybe those are more favored. So, those are some of the things we're asking is, when we're done, we want to have a zoning code that development comes in one at a time and not a big negotiated. We'll get as close as we can to the 5,000, and that we won't have the worst-case scenario where everyone picks the permitted use that has low-density jobs, and we don't get the jobs that we want in this community, because we do have a pretty large jobs-housing imbalance in Clackamas County and Oregon City specifically. And one of the big goals of this project was to provide more living wage jobs in Oregon City. So, that's kind of the lens we're looking at. If I can get my... Okay, that's not working. Okay, so this is the map that was adopted in 2008 and re-adopted in 2016. So, I call this the watercolor map, because we're still kind of up-floating at the 20,000 feet. So, the area in the blue is the north employment campus. It's definitely most associated with higher-density job uses. So, businesses that would have, you know, a decent density of jobs to them. So, what would not be permitted, for example, would be large outdoor storage, because you're just not going to get a lot of density of jobs with large outdoor storage uses. Areas in purple, this is our central mixed-use employment village. So, that's a long kind of word, but central mixed-use, we're looking at this combination of jobs, some housing, some retail, and what's that right balance? This mixed-use center, this circle, really is the node for, it's the commercial node. I kind of call it the two-block main street. It's right at Glen Oak Road and Beaver Creek, and there will be some type of, either a traffic signal or roundabout, we can talk about. That's a future slide. But the idea is you would kind of be able to walk along those two blocks. Businesses will be right at the front, parking would be behind the buildings. You kind of have more of a urban downtown main street for just two blocks. That would be, you know, a lot of your retail services, and then maybe housing could be, or offices could be allowed on upper floors, but we'll probably be requiring ground-floor retail in that little section. And then, the two yellows, there's a darker mustard and a lighter mustard. These aren't the greatest colors for this plan. And these are different densities of housing. And so, the future slides, Elizabeth will break down each district and kind of what we've heard from the public and what the plan says. But that's a general breakout. There's some opportunities for trails within the BPA Power Line Easement, Bonneville Power Administration, as well as some opportunity for some view corridors. We're also looking at, this has been identified as a linear park, but we don't have an adopted park in our Parks Plan right now. So, kind of in that transition, how do we use, how do we use or not use the zoning code to help get that park identified, acquired, and built as this process? And so, we're working with our staff to better understand how zoning fits in that piece of the puzzle, because it can't do everything, but it might have a role to play.
Before you left that map?
Yeah.
For the general public watching, we're talking about 1,000 of 1,400 homes. Would most of them be concentrated in the yellow mustard area?
A fair amount, some may be able to be built in the purple area.
That's what I was gonna say, so some of them.
But those are, we're kind of, we're kind of looking at maybe their bonuses, or how can they be? But a lot, for the most part, the mustard area is more identified for housing.
Any idea how, is that 1,000, and the rest are going to be filled in with purple when you come up to the numbers of 1,600?
I think maybe when Elizabeth goes through the slides, she can go into that a little bit more detail.
And I think it was asked during those, how high are those going to be in the purple areas?
Yeah.
Like, so stories?
When we get, we'll get that to our slide. Those are great questions, and we have a little more detail on that.
I had one question.
Sure.
If somebody shows some interest in developing a residential in a property that's in the blue, could they ask for a variance, some kind of a?
Well, I think, you know, to Mr. Eggers' point, we are having some conversations with some property owners about kind of...
Because it's not written in stone yet.
Well, it, it is a little bit. So, it's, whatever is softer than stone, I don't know.
It's soft stones.
But, it's sandstone. And I had a slide that I didn't use this time, but I really like it. Think about four boxes. You have number of dwelling units here, you have number of jobs here, you have zoning designations, the districts, and then you have the map. So, you kind of have these forces that are pushing in. And then you have this box in the middle, this is where we're writing the code and then looking at the maps. So, any adjustments, we need to say, you know, does it meet these? The number of jobs and the number of dwelling units? How closely does it tack to the, describing the districts and on the map? And that's where we make findings. So, when you, when you leave the tweaking here and there, and we think on balance, and we can kind of make the case, and we can write the findings and the numbers, and we think it meets the goal and intent, that's kind of where we're at. When people, the farther you go in your proposal, and the harder it is to show meeting intent, the harder it will be for us to adopt this plan without amending the concept plan. And what we heard pretty clear from our elected officials is, you know, this is an adopted concept plan, this went through a big community process, and we're here to implement the concept plan, not revise it. But, people get a little confused on changing some lines on a map. If we're on, inside that box, that kind of sandbox, and we can meet these forces, then I think we can make small tweaks and still say we're meeting the goals, the intents, the metrics. And that's where we're kind of at today, because people, I think, the more I'm realizing it too, is it's not a quick, it's not an easy transition where you just say, here's this narrative document, here's this watercolor, let's just adopt plan and adopt it. Choices are made, there's choices in every way you move forward. And so, we just have to make sure we're making decisions well within that kind of boundary we've set, if that makes sense.
So, I have a couple more questions for you.
Sure.
And may be part of a presentation, but I don't think so. We have a new commission, and I know as we've made comments to this new commission, they say that what the other commissions had done beforehand may not necessarily stand regarding like lawsuits with the state regarding annexations and all that. So, this all was planned in 2016 with the, with the previous administration. So, this could change again with this administration, am I correct, with the new commissioners?
So, as, I'm gonna give you a staff answer, I know it's slurry, yes, you are, but I'm gonna give my staff answer, which is, you know, I've been given clear direction that we're not really ready as a city to reopen a public process to revise a concept plan. And so, if you're not going to reopen the public process to allow fair access to all parties, and really to provide a new public outreach process, because what we don't want is to kind of open up the plan and then like make a change, but don't allow a good public process. So, on our end is, if you are saying we are not ready as a policy to open up for a new public process, we should be implementing the plan that's adopted.
And the second one is regarding community development. And we say 5,000 jobs, so does our Community Development Director, that's, I do, is it? That's the other person that I'm not sure if it's filled yet. Do they say, okay, they look at an application and say, okay, we want this amount of work. Okay, you can't come in here because you don't want to.
So, that's a great question, and Elizabeth can kind of address that, because we've been having a conversation, and we have some economic development help through Echo Northwest. They're writing a memo for us to try to use market-driven data, understand the market today, understand what type of uses generally have that job. So, once again, zoning, we're here to make sure that we have minimal control over... Zoning can only do so much, right? So, if someone wants to solve all their problems with zoning, then you're gonna run a really complicated zone, and probably nobody's gonna like it. So, we try to see what we can, what zoning can do to help accomplish this goal. And we can look at minimums, like what's the minimum? When do we know we shouldn't allow that? And then, we're gonna, we're gonna be asking Echo Northwest to say, well, in general, based on our red lines and our maps, and what we've permitted or prohibited now, or what we've added, do you think the market could support developments that get us to the 5,000 jobs? So, we're asking for their professional expertise. But the answer of, will we be counting jobs at the time of development application? No, zoning is based on uses. And so, we look at average uses. We won't, because we, as a city zoning, you don't want to be in a place where you allow somebody in, and there's a recession, and people get laid off, and then some way to kick the bill. No, so that, sometimes when you get like federal tax credits or state tax credits, sometimes related jobs, you gotta turn that in, because you're getting an additional credit on something. Zoning is, we generally are looking at use categories. And we, we, we curate out uses that are, have low opportunity for jobs.
I know, having, Dirk and I having attended some of those, people ask different questions of us, knowing that we're on the Planning Commission, that's one of them. Whether you're going to be selective, whether they exclude some and include others?
We're trying to include and exclude categories of uses.
So, like a Tektronix could possibly go there, or is that too big a business?
Yeah, so we wouldn't be naming.
I'm trying to get the size idea.
And I think maybe let's wait, because Elizabeth has a lot of this to tell her.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, those are all great questions, and we were wrestling with some of those questions as well. And Ritzkin is planning, is the zoning code the right vehicle to implement? And there's other vehicles that we're looking at in addition to the zoning code. So, once again, goodness. I'm sorry, this, everything isn't working on this computer today. Am I going the right way? No, this is Elizabeth's. No, my clicker's not working. And then my keyboard's not working. Is it this one?
You need a 15-year-old.
Seriously.
We already changed the battery.
And they changed the battery.
I was proud of that.
You're in a little bit of a server farm or something.
Well, I'm trying, oh, here we go, let's go back.
Yeah, it's a flat, right, strawberry farm.
Okay, so, what has been happening since 2008? Well, we've actually had a fair amount of analysis of this area through other master plans. So, while, you know, 2008, the concept plan was adopted, we were looking at our water master plan in 2010, our transportation system plan in 2013, our sewer master plan in 2014, our stormwater design standards 2015, the recent alternative mobility process of looking at alternative mobility requirements at 213 in Beaver Creek. There's a Beaver Creek Employment Area, which is a kind of an economic development group that looks at development on both sides of Beaver Creek. And then, the in-process Equitable Housing Code Amendments. So, to that, to say why we wrote this is, all of these plans incorporated the number... So uh, to that, to say why we wrote this is, all of these plans incorporated the numbers and the concept plan goals and policies and all of that into their analysis. So, you know, the water master plan has assumed the loads of the Beaver Creek Road area, as was identified in the concept plan. The transportation system plan looked at the Beaver Creek Road concept plan and looked at the, the identified loads, um based on the proposed types of uses in the concept plan. So we've done some of this initial analysis and fed this in. What we are doing is we are asking our consultant to relook at all of our master plans with our, now, when we have our refined map and zoning code, to do that double check, like, are we sure that all of our master plans have accounted? Do we have, do we make an assumption in oh eight that just is different ten years from now, and we need to relook at that assumption and make sure that the master plan addresses that? So there'll be a memo coming from um Three J Consultant, which is our other consultant, and their engineers will be looking at all of our master plans for that. So that is already happening, we're um, uh, we've, let's see, so um, we've also had fifty percent of the district annexed. And so to the question to Mr. Mr. Guile is, um, subsequent, we've had a couple of properties have come in through annexation, but they haven't had a zone change because we haven't had a concept plan adopted yet. And so what they're doing is they're holding their county zone, which is FU ten, which is future urban ten acres, which basically means they can't develop, they have to have ten acre parcels or more, so it's a sense of holding zone. So they're, they're used to have this holding zone, and they, they need to have um at a minimum the development code adopted, but as part of this process, we will be rezoning those properties. So at the end of this process, if you're in the city limits, you will have a new zone that matches the concept plan. If you're outside the city limits, you will have a comprehensive plan designation, so you know what your zoning will be when you choose as a property owner to annex. So that's kind of the differences. A lot of times you have a much more linear process, but because we had this pause between adoption in oh eight and readoption two thousand sixteen, we've had properties who wanted to annex. So right now they're paying city tax rates, but they're holding their county zone.
So a question there. Sorry to my fellow commissioners here, but I've been involved in this process for so long. You said when they choose to annex, as we know at all these meetings, there was quite a few people who were upset with this whole plan, so they may not choose to annex.
That's fine.
Could there be some islands coming up in those? Because you can, you can go around it, but leave those in the city.
When, when every annexation that comes in comes to the planning commission and comes to the city commission, and you're required to look at the comprehensive plan and how you analyze decisions, and the Beaver Creek Road concept plan is a um, an ancillary document, so this is one of those documents you can look at, and there's criteria for annexation, you'll go through a public process and you'll make your findings of why you are or are not allowing islands as part of the annexation. So that's, that's, that's your future job.
So we're not gonna force people?
Well, I think my answer is, there's a public hearings process to do that analysis, and we have code and criteria and a planning commission, city commission, who will look at our adopted plans and let that process go through and make their determination.
As you all know, I mean, the first meeting I was there, they were yelling at you guys, and the next meeting they were a little calmer, or they just gave up and didn't show up.
And those are, those aren't all probably, those are.
That was me in the beginning.
So if a, if a property owner doesn't want to be annexed, can they be forced to annex?
There are, there are ways you can be forced, those definitely go to the voters then. So with the new laws on annexation, only the willing property owners who want to be annexed can go through the kind of non-voter annexation, but if you're bringing in, enforcing someone in that doesn't want to be annexed, that does go to a public vote.
I should explain to you, like, at Park Place, they had the one they were doing last spring or last summer, and there's three or four properties on um Holcomb that did not want to be annexed in. But now there's a whole island all the way around them, and this is gonna be city, that city, and they're sitting there with, because they didn't want to pay all the extra taxes and all the hookups and all that.
So this, so the planning commission, city commission went through the process and in that situation made findings. There may be a different proposal and different findings will be made at a different, so each application is its own unique application.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, once again, um, there's really finite deliverables that are coming out of, seriously, finite deliverables that are coming out of here, comprehensive plan map, a zoning map, and development code amendments. So those are like, those are the things you see adopting will be put in to city code. What we have on the right side column is some of our consultant analysis. So Elizabeth will be writing a zoning code audit for us and saying.
Did.
But, you know, and through the, through the deliverables, this is what, you know, this is my reading of a narrative, and this is me looking at your code, and this is what I think is the best path forward to get you to where you want to be. And then we have um DKS, which is a transportation consulting firm, will be looking at transportation capacity analysis. They also did our transportation system plans, so they're very knowledgeable of Oregon City. It's again, uh, Three J will be doing the utility capacity analysis, and then Echo Northwest will be looking at this market feasibility, like, so we've zoned it, you know, knowing your background as, you know, real estate and market professionals, have we created a zone that reasonably can get us there? And if not, what are your recommendations to further add or refine to get us to that place? So we've had um a, a pretty robust public involvement process since January. And so what we've done since January is we had some key stakeholder interviews with property owners and key stakeholders like the school district and the college. We had two public open houses at the um Oregon City High School Library on January twenty ninth and April ninth. We've had a ability for both questions that came out of that to be able to be answered online, so I had online forms coming out from both of those meetings that were open a couple of weeks after the meeting closed, and actually I think our April ninth one is still open, because I just received a comment from somebody. Uh, we've created a uh online comment tracker, so we've been kind of taking this, all this data, we've been getting from people both at meetings, through formal letters, through emails, through the survey forms, and we're trying to categorize them into groups of questions. And then staff is trying to answer either, this is your concern, this is how this project can address the concern, or that's a good concern, but zoning's not quite the right avenue for this. So uh, right now our public comment tracker is online, and I'm just finishing up the comments from April ninth, so I would say it'll be revised probably within the next week. And we're gonna just keep this comment tracker going all the way through the public hearings process. So ideally, as planning commission, you can kind of read through and see, what have people been talking about, what have been their questions, and how can this plan address them, or how can this, maybe this plan can address it because they're asking to do something that's just so far out of our little box we're in? Or uh is um, is like not proportional, or um is zoning's just not the right way to do it? But that might be that, and so maybe they need to talk to economic development or parks or some, another department that may get to that answer, but zoning's not the right, the right implementing measure for that. So uh, here's a brief outline of next steps. The stars were the public outreach opportunities, so the January and April meeting, this meeting, which not a lot of people came here tonight, but it's always available online, and I'll link this presentation to our um project website, which actually we have a hundred and fifty people signed up to get our newsletter, our, our email updates, and they'll have those updates all the way through the public hearings process. So a shout out, if please, if you want to be involved, all you need to do is go to our public, our project website on the planning page of Oregon City's website, orcity.org, and under contact us, you can fill out your email and you'll be added to the uh ongoing public comment email list. The planning commission, uh, I mean, the city commission will be presenting to them in June, on a Tuesday, the eleventh of June. On Monday, the tenth of June, we'll have an open house here. So at that open house, we will have our proposed red lines and zoning map. So from the work we've seen to date with the public, uh, we are having our consultant team put together the draft deliverables, and that will be presented at that open house as well as the planning commission.
June tenth.
June tenth.
Did you just say June eleventh?
June eleventh, the next day is a work session with the city commission.
Work session or regular meeting, okay, thanks.
Yeah. And so, uh, and then we will start hearings kind of mid to late summer, we're still a little TBD on the date on that one. But it's a, a notice, so the, anybody within three hundred feet of the whole Beaver Creek concept plan area will get a public notice, there'll, there'll be multiple blue signs up, um, so hopefully people are engaged. I will, if you're on our mailing list, I'll let people know of all the dates. And then that's a public hearings process, so do, while we're taking comment here, make sure, if people are really passionate, to make sure they get engaged in the public hearing process, provide public comment.
Invited to the work session.
Yeah, uh, just like they're invited here too.
Okay.
So at this time, I'm gonna pass this on to Elizabeth Decker, who's uh one of our two consultants for this project with uh jet planning, and she's gonna kind of walk you through the, all the hard work she's done in the last four or five months, what we've listened to with the public, how she's kind of read the document, tried to translate it. She's gonna go through the sub-districts, and some of these questions we're asking inside this uh, the sandbox of trying to make this transition of what is the code gonna be and what can zoning do to help bring it along? So all you have to do is go up and down.
Okay, now it's my turn to see if I can make technology work. Thanks for having me tonight. No, no.
Where's that fifteen-year-old?
Yeah, really, am I just not, maybe is it, it's just like, it's just, here, like, what if I just put it up here? I think it's just too far. Oh, maybe that's it, yeah. There we go, all right. Um, so, uh, seriously. Yeah, no, we're good, we're good here. So we're, um, my, I'm here tonight to talk to you about some of the zoning code and some of the draft map concepts that we've put together, and to tell you a little bit about the public feedback and the comments and ideas we've received and how we're pulling that all together into the final. And I will try to, you know, um, improvise and integrate in some of the questions and ideas I've heard so far tonight. So. Oh, um, so what we started with is um a hybrid implementation concept. We're looking to use the best of the existing city zoning um that matches the sub-district concepts already laid out in the concept plan, rather than starting from scratch with completely new zoning for this area. We want uh more continuity with the existing city um and with the code that also helps ease implementation, staff's more familiar with, you know, what it means, developers are also, um, and just really avoids like tacking on huge new chapters to, to the city zoning code. But we um needed to audit it, as Christina mentioned, to identify any shortcomings in the existing zoning districts um as are laid out in the um, in the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. So if there's something specific in the plan that isn't addressed by the existing zoning, then we get to the third step, um, where we're drafting and proposing some code refinements for each of the sub-districts, um, that more specifically implement the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. So it's sort of um tacking on to the existing city.
Could you explain to the general public who's watching, what do you mean by sub-districts? It's not neighborhoods, right? It's, some people would look at it as, well, that's a whole different neighborhood. Sub-district is a, how do you define that?
Do we be now, I, I just can't. Here, um, yes, thanks Commissioner Guire. So what we have here um is there are five sub-districts in the Beaver Creek Road concept plan area. So the total is four hundred and fifty-three acres, give or take, and each sub-district, they vary, some are as small as around twenty acres, and some are, the north employment campus, for example, is the largest, is about a hundred and twenty-six acres. And so what we have here is a table of the proposed comprehensive plan designations and the proposed city zoning districts um that we have reviewed and think are the best fit for the sub-districts in the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. Um, and we were able to get pretty good alignment. I think that there was enough flexibility within the city zoning code, um, that there were some good fits. And I'd point out that the, the residential districts in particular, um, because with the equitable code housing, equitable housing code amendments that are still being reviewed, particularly the R five district, really, a lot of the changes that are proposed there are going to be a great fit for the east mixed-use neighborhood. So as we get into it, um, you'll see that we won't need as many amendments to that with this project. So really a pretty good fit um with these five zones as proposed. So um, we took, uh, as Christina calls it, the watercolor map, um, and we looked at sort of the most literal translation of it uh onto the existing property lines um to implement these districts and try to figure out, you know, what properties should have which zoning. Um, and so we started with the first draft um of this, and that turned into. So here is the zoning, our draft implementation map. And you see this doesn't have the right of ways because um we put them on here for reference, but because they are not city, since they aren't dedicated to the city yet, they need base zoning uh before they become right of way. So this is our initial map. And let's see, what did I want to tell you about this?
Blue square take the place of the circle, is that what the blue square is?
Oh, sorry, I have a whole story to tell you about the square. So the square is here, so just to point out again, and we have our five districts here, um, and what we did is we did try to have a pretty literal translation, um, but we did wind up with those weird, where the square is, for example, um, that's one property that wound up with four different zones, um, because the property lines really don't line up very well with the watercolor map. And, you know, we do anticipate, what you can't see is that despite all these individual properties uh and the existing property lines, there are two major property owners, um, at least south of Loda Road that we're looking at. And so even though it's split up into um, you know, this many parcels, there are not that many individual um property owners who are engaged in this. So we also anticipate that these properties will be combined and further subdivided, so we wanted to, you know, have some awareness of where those property lines are, but also not be bound for those um in terms of zoning um with this implementation.
So the blue square represents some, some citizens are two, two properties that have not yet agreed to be a part of this, is what you're saying?
No, this, I just put that blue square in to highlight for you all this evening, um, you know, some of the challenges that we faced in doing this implementation map, wherein, you know, this one in particular shows just how we followed the concept plan, and it looks a little bit weird, um, that's a technical term, uh, with the, you know, when you compare the proposed zoning districts to the existing property lines. Um, and so we're, we're looking to balance that. You can also see sort of in the lower left corner um of that blue, there's a, a triangle-shaped property, and we did not follow the, the mauve, shall we say, and the red, we did not follow a straight line, instead of like cutting off a tiny triangle of um, of that lower property, we zoned it in, you know, entirely in the red. So we made some adjustments um for property lines, but relatively minor, because we wanted to implement um the dis- sub-district boundaries from the concept plan as clearly as we could.
Just for referencing, can you tell me what color represents the Oregon City golf course right now? Is it in the lavender, or is it in the gold or mustard?
Uh, it is a lot of these, in fact, I.
Okay, it's that big, okay.
Yes, it is, um, it's a significant portion of the lower, of the um southeast portion of this sub-district, so a lot of the, um, you know, mustard, shall we call it?
It's more residential then?
Yes, the golf course is planned for almost entirely residential development.
They can play golf in the evenings.
Yeah. What else to say about, uh, imagine? Oh, and um, to the point that we've had some questions tonight and throughout the process about, you know, to what extent are these just sub-district boundaries and the proposed zoning district boundaries changeable through this process? You know, the answer is that we are mostly looking to implement the watercolor map as closely as possible, um, both, you know, to be true to the vision of the plan and also to achieve those jobs and housing um targets that we discussed, you know, for example, if we were to change half of that industrial area to the residential goldenish, mustardish color, you know, we would no longer meet our employment targets and would in fact have some serious problems since that land was brought in um for employment uses. So we have to be um truthful to the plan um with some tinkering around the edges, I would also.
Before you move from this particular one, um, I know that a lot of that land is open up there, are the thin black lines, are they to indicate different property owners?
The thin black lines illustrate the existing um property boundaries.
So those are all different individual property owners in that?
Yes, but there are many, um, there are a few property owners who own multiple parcels.
I see.
So although there are all these.
But that does divide it up to show you where all that, it's individual right now.
Yes, that's how, that's how the ownership patterns are today. Um, and so in terms again of like tinkering with the boundaries, here's one example that we heard consistently through the public process. The brown here is the higher-density residential, the apartments, well, could be apartments, could be a variety of residential types, um, but as planned, it includes a portion of that southern boundary, which is along um a private drive called Old Acres Lane. And we heard consistently. And we heard consistently from those property owners that they had concerns about that level of density right on the property boundary. There's also a small stream going through there, so there could be some drainage issues, some limitations on development, um, as well as there's portions of the concept plan that call for a general tapering of density towards the perimeter. And so we really don't feel, um, that this is going to be an appropriate area for that R-two zone, so we're looking at adjusting this boundary a little bit. Um, so I bring that up in this example of like, this is the level of tinkering that we're considering, um, to the map at this time. Um, and again, for, you know, these reasons that we've heard throughout the process.
In the feedback that you've gotten, I know that, that the golf courses, the major, uh, portion of this are one of the biggest parts. Uh, there's been a lot of kickback by a lot of people up there. Not everybody's agreeing to wanting to be annexed in or correct? Or is there a major portion that have agreed to this? Or do you know that, um, percentage?
Well, I'd say, you know, as, as Christina mentioned, over fifty percent of this area has been annexed, including all of the gol- golf course area.
Okay.
So it's mostly, um, the southern, southern half of the district has been largely annexed in and a few of the properties along Beaver Creek Road to the north.
They were very vocal about it.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to entirely categorize that, but I think a lot of the concerns actually come from people outside of the city limits and outside of the UGB limits. And so it's not so much that their properties would be annexed so much as, you know, they're, they're concerned about the spillover impacts, um, on their properties.
They're outside the three hundred, uh, what is that, three hundred feet?
The three hundred for public notice, yes. Yeah, um, so, you know, we, for example, you know, along Old Acres Lane, we've certainly, um, been engaging with a lot of those property owners and we're, you know, trying to be responsive and addressing their concerns while also implementing the plan and, you know, recognizing that this is an area planned for urban development. Um, you know, that's, so it is a balance. Okay, next. You know, when Christina was doing this, I thought she, you know, like, surely I'll be able to figure this out.
While we were talking, it came up with a restart. Did you all see that?
I know, that partly helps. Okay, great. Um, so again, just, uh, to really drill it into your head that our mapping goals are to achieve this balance of dwelling units and, and jobs. And so these are the approximate sizes of the districts, um, in gross acres as they stand, um, as we've mapped them so far. And so again, you know, when you start to think about what are the limits of the tinkering to the map that we might be considering through this process, we need to, you know, we're aiming to stay pretty true to these numbers, um, even with a little shift around the perimeters. Okay, next please.
Are the parks an open space? Is that an area that's can't, is not buildable? Is that the idea of it?
We'll talk through it, yeah. It's all, it's a mix of some various, various constraints with different goals. Um, some, yeah, excellent. So the first one that we're going to start sort of in the north with the North Employment Campus, um, is intended, I think, to the discussion about jobs. Um, what we are, the direction from the plan is looking at, um, you know, sustainable green industries with family wage jobs. Um, and while we want to support that, zoning as a tool is better suited um, to define very broad use categories that can be permitted in a zone. So light industrial, office, research and development, corporate headquarters, um, research, oh, I already said that one. Um, rather than trying to name, you know, like Textronics is okay, um, you know, Solar World, not okay. Um, it's not really the job of the zoning code to pick winners or losers in that way. Um, it's really more, um, a partnership with economic development to then go out and target those industries or those individual businesses, um, that would be a better fit for the district. Um, so we want to keep the use categories fairly large. We also don't want to, um, get got caught in a position where the zoning code is really far behind, um, in terms of, you know, technology moves so fast, we don't want to define a use so narrowly that, you know, it's no longer being made, like if you were doing, I don't know, you know, VHS tape manufacturing. Like, that would not be a very useful use category at this point in time. It might have been a great idea back in the eighties, but, you know, we, um, as much as we try to keep the code updated, it, uh, can be more challenging. Um, so the, the broader the use categories, the better. We also heard a lot about nuisance limitation, which is, um, one of the more fundamental purposes of zoning. So things like glare, light, vibration, smoke, uh... Um, and so we have a lot of those tools in the zoning code already that will apply to development in this area. Um, and then in terms of the site and building designs, um, you know, certainly the goal is to have an attractive, um, headquarters-type look, um, with a lot of greenery. And so we do already have that implemented through a fifteen percent open space requirement. Um, there are no minimum and maximum site sizes in this industrial district, which gives a lot of flexibility for the types of uses and the types of businesses that want to come in. Um, I think Christina alluded to, we are proposing to add a twenty-five percent maximum for outdoor storage in this zone, um, with, not for the zone citywide, but simply as the zone applies to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area, um, so that that limits the le- the portion of the site that, um, generates fewer jobs. Um, the idea of prioritizing development, um, with greater job potential. And then, uh, we also have a pretty significant buffer. If we move to the next slide, ah, there we are. So in the, the green dashed line, you can see how this North Employment Campus directly borders onto the residential area. And so we want to make sure that we have adequate buffering tools there, uh, to minimize the impacts. Again, these dark blue lines are the large, um, the collectors and the arterials, the major roadways. So there, there could wind up being some local roads along that transition that could help make the buffer. Uh, but we also are looking at some tools that go beyond. The existing code has a twenty-five-foot landscaping buffer and we're looking at some more tools like fencing and berms, um, perhaps a greater width or more specificity of planting materials, um, to make sure that that, that boundary is managed more appropriately. Um, and I, okay?
I think you can do it now.
It might be working, okay. It's just too far away.
No?
Okay, yeah.
I will be your Vanna White.
All right, it is a moving target tonight. Thank you all for your patience bearing with us. Okay, and so then moving a little bit further to the south, this is the area, um, right along Beaver Creek Road, across from the high school. And so the mixed employment village here, um, is intended as a transition from, you know, between that industrial campus and then the more Main Street area that will be along Glen Oak Road, um, with a, we think, a primary focus on employment. Um, you know, we're piecing together the clues of the plan. Um, and it's certainly intended to be mixed use, but it does appear that the primary goal is again, meeting that five thousand jobs target. So we are looking at, um, some percentages for supporting uses like retail and residential to make sure that things like office and light manufacturing, uh, may stay a priority in this district. Um, at that time, we, at that, given that, we are looking to promote upper-story residential, um, as an opportunity, uh, in terms of scale, I believe that's the next. Yeah, great. Um, so there's some questions about height earlier. Um, so the minimum height in this district is twenty-five feet. That's to ensure we get two-story development. Um, again, that's about, you know, sort of a more efficient use of land, um, so that we are moving towards those jobs and housing goals. And then the maximum is sixty feet, um, and that could accommodate four to five stories, right? Which is right in line with what the plan calls for. We had looked at, you know, whether we needed any additional incentives for upper-story residential, um, in terms of a height bonus, um, but we're not, that's not part of our refined proposal at this time, um, unless we hear otherwise from our economic consultant. Um, we're also working on refining the, the FAR right now, so...
I'm sorry?
Yes, um, the FAR floor area ratio refers to how much square footage of development is built relative to the size of the site. So easy way, an FAR of one would be a site that is completely covered by a one-story building. Uh, FAR of point five means half parking lot, half building. Um, and right now, the minimum for the implementing zone here is point two-five. Uh, but we're proposing to increase that to, uh, point three-five is what we're tentatively looking at. Again, with some refinement from our economic development consultant, um, to understand sort of what the market would want to build and it, how much of a role zoning code needs to play in setting that minimum and how much development pressures will ensure that, you know, point three-five or even higher, um, as a result of development.
With the FAR and with the, the pictures you've shown here, parking is that? I know that the last plan commission was really concerned about parking. Is it going to be behind the structures parking? Or is there be a parking structure or parking lot right behind for all the apartment dwellers that are going to be in these?
Um, so it's going to vary a little bit from district to district. In the north, north, north Employment Campus and the Mixed Employment Village, uh, parking lots can be located to the side or to the rear. Um, and for Main Street that we'll get to, we're looking at really limiting, um, the presence of parking and pushing it, um, at least a hundred feet back from the Main Street. Um, but parking can be located on the same side.
I know we had a big conversation about point eight versus one car versus, uh, even on, on the community standards for local...
Right, and we're not proposing to change any of the minimum parking ratios for this district. Um, so there, uh, the, you know, if we, if we wound up at point eight or point nine or one, um, for apartments, that's the same standard that will apply in all of these districts.
There's a big drive to get people out of their cars and make them, even though people still are going to love the cars.
Yeah, but that, uh, we're not changing the minimums at this time.
Good.
Okay, and the next one here. Um, so I think that the big refinements to, um, the implementing zone, which is the MUC two zone, is to integrate some of those light manufacturing uses, um, that are entirely contained within buildings. Um, we had been looking at, it's interesting, we, Christina and I met a couple hours just before this and, um, we might further refine these, but we're looking, you know, the general goal is to limit residential use. It might be fifty percent of the floor area, it might be a little bit lower. Um, but to upper-story in the rear of lots, so those employment uses stay front and center, literally. Um, and then looking at building size limitations for retail. Uh, in particular, again, trying to make sure that employment stays front and center, um, rather than, you know, giving over to big box retail in particular. All right, and then Main Street, uh, you know, Christina calls it two blocks. If you think on both sides of the street, you know, it's four block faces, uh, but same idea. Um, and so right on Glen Oak Road, um, and the implementing zone here is called the, the Neighborhood Commercial Zone. It is a zone that was specifically written for concept plan areas and to form these sort of mini-town centers at the heart of these concept plan areas. And so it really gives us a great tool to help build this, um, center node for the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area. And it includes, um, some key features are a limitation on individual retail and buildings, um, that are allowed up to ten thousand square feet. The idea again being that you have sort of a limited plate, a limited geographic area and you want to concentrate it in as many, um, smaller businesses and fewer, you know, larger big box stores on these two blocks, um, while integrating residential on upper stories or the rear of lots. Um, but we really want to push that back and make, maintain that active, um, retail and commercial presence right on the, the street front. And just a note on location, um, if you're familiar, so Gleno, this is proposed on Glen Oak. Uh, one road, sort of further note, north is Myers Road. That's directly across from the high school and we had gotten some feedback, um, wondering if that could become the town center, if we can move this zoning up. Um, and we looked into it, but there is a permitted apartment complex already, um, not yet constructed, but permitted and still, still has a valid permit, um, that straddles Myers Road right now. And so we weren't able to move the district, so it stays, um, in its Glen Oak location.
How did that apartment get approved in there when it wasn't really part of the concept plan? Shouldn't that have waited until the concept plan was completed before that got approved?
Yeah, so they were one of those few parcels that were in the nineteen eighty urban growth boundary. And when they annexed, we had to give them a zone. And they weren't bound by the concept plan. And so the mixed-use corridor zone was the closest one we could think of, knowing that they weren't, you know, they weren't bound by the concept plan requirements because they were in the old urban growth boundary. And so, um, multifamilies are permitted use in that zone. And so if, if they continue, they can build what they were allowed. But I think what we're looking at is, um, if for some reason the proj- the project doesn't go through, what is the zoning for that area? Will it have any life? Um, but if it goes through, we will, we will acknowledge it as a pre-existing permitted use and we'll have to work around it.
So they worked with the city at all to...
Yeah, they're in, they're slowly going through the building permit review process. So it'll continue to go into the building permit review process until...
So if it goes through, you have to, you have to change your plan or the concept plan? Or have you already built that in to it?
Well, we've acknowledged that it may happen. Uh, it's in our, um, mixed-use employment, yes, it makes use employment district. So, um, we'll just have to acknowledge it. Um, and that's kind of one of the other reasons why we're really careful about residential in that district because we may have this apartment complex in that. And do we want to allow even more residential without a corresponding amount of employment that, that comes in?
Yeah, um, and so in the Main Street District, um, we're going to look at maintaining that balance a little differently. Um, and we're looking at, um, again, that Neighborhood Commercial Zone. So mostly similar height, twenty-five foot minimum, but the maximum in the Neighborhood Commercial is only forty-five feet. Um, so since the plan here calls for three to five stories, um, we are exploring increasing that. It's forty-five feet or three stories and we're proposing increasing that, um, to up to four stories, um, to sort of hit the mid-range, um, to help incentivize upper-story residential. We'll also look for some feedback from our economic consultants about, you know, how much that might help um, or if it's necessary to meet our targets for the number of housing units we're trying to accomplish.
Glory, does this, is that anything to do with the city codes that we're looking at? Everybody's looking at right now, I know we're looking at heights in downtown Oregon City. Uh, is there any codes that say throughout Oregon City, how, how buildings can be in here in Oregon City?
No, the code amendment package that's currently being considered by the City Commission is only looking at a height amendment as it relates to the mixed-use downtown zone. It's not, um, contemplating any other amendments.
But in our city code, is there anything about the height of buildings?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, on a district by dist- zone, for each zoning.
It can vary by district and like the, uh, the government offices up there on, on red soil that, that are higher?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and a reminder that these, any amendments that we propose, you know, for example, the Neighborhood Commercial Zone is forty-five feet maximum. If we propose an amendment, it would only apply within the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Is how we're writing and drafting these amendments. We're also proposing to adjust the FAR for just the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Um, right now, there is no minimum FAR in Neighborhood Commercial because it was envisioned that it might be dropped in to existing residential neighborhoods. And so, you know, to be sensitive to that scale of development, we, the city didn't want to be pushing a really high intensity of development. But because this isn't going to be a new, um, development area, we want to build it from the ground up and really make it that destination. Um, so we're proposing a point-five FAR, that's about half the site, and less than that if you go multi-story. So we think that should be, um, reasonable to meet. Um, there's multiple standards in the code already that address streetscapes and pedestrian amenities. We're trying to bring the buildings up to the front, um, and really create that street print, uh, street presence. And that goes hand in hand with reducing the impacts of parking. Um, so it'll be prohibited along the Glen Oak frontage. Um, and we'll be looking at limiting access onto Glen Oak and, um, allowing, um, alley access to rear parking lots instead. Take it away, Vanna. Um, so some of the refinements that we have learned through the public process is keeping that ten thousand square foot limitation for buildings, um, keeping residential on upper stories and rear lots. And also, um, Christina included me in that those limitations are also tied to, um, delivering on non-residential uses. You have to build a certain amount of retail or commercial before you qualify to build that upper-story residential. It has to be part of a package. Um, so that helps make sure that we get both pieces, um, and then those parking limitations too.
What are height bonuses?
Um, well, that's one way, you know, as I mentioned, it's forty-five feet now, uh, or three stories and we're looking to go up to four or five. So a, a bonus for additional residential stories is one way it might be structured. We might just recommend, um, raising the height limit. Um, so it's just a, a placeholder to how we structure...
Not tax incentive?
That could be a, a later city initiative, but not proposed with this package.
Yeah, not a zoning code implementation.
Good.
Yeah, oh, and then just one other thing about alleys. Um, if you've been following the equitable housing package, um, there's been a lot of talk about how, how alleys are going to be used in these concept plan areas and going forward. Um, so we'll be looking for city direction, um, citywide from the commission about what role they'd like to see alleys take in terms of whether they're mandatory or not, um, if, and then follow that lead for this district as well. Okay, and then we get into our more residential areas. Um, so the West Mixed-Use Neighborhood, I mean, there, there is a mix, but I would say that, um, the overwhelming emphasis is on residential types. Um, and there are, we'll look at adding in some limited commercial uses. Um, we in particular explored the idea of cottage industries, which are... Um, we in particular explored the idea of cottage industries, which are sort of, I like to call it um a home occupation on drugs. They're uh more intensive home occupations that could allow uh more customer visits, um, perhaps some sales. Uh, and more even sort of uh manufacturing type aspects, so I've heard of like small home breweries. Um, or woodworking shops are a common example.
Ebay.
Yeah, yeah, um, uh, it could be like a bake shop or um, I don't know, brick manufacturing, probably not. Uh, small asphalt plant, no, that doesn't fit in your backyard. Um, so we looked at that, and that was something that was um drafted with the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. As sort of this concept plan is gonna be a special area with a greater emphasis on employment, so is this something that would fit into our district? So we spent some time talking about that, um, and the, we'll get to, um. The direction was really no, that that was not something that needed to be integrated into the neighborhoods, um, given that there are so many employment opportunities throughout the district. Um, so instead, the focus that we heard from the public process. Um, was on keeping these largely focused on residential with an overall um one unit per two thousand square foot. Uh, one density bonus that we're looking at there um could be, for example, if it's a LEED certified green building, perhaps you could get, you know, a small density bonus for that. Um, to help implement some of the sustainability goals of the plan. And the equitable housing code project has really, I I'd say, set us up well to implement this part of this sub-district. Um, there are some design standards for all the different residential types. Um, as well as those density limits and the variety of residential types. Um, and then one other, you know, piece to touch on in terms of what zoning can and can't do, there's a lot of talk. Um, citywide and in the concept plan about affordability. Um, and so I think what this sub-district and this neighborhood can help provide. Um, you know, zoning is not a tool that can directly limit the price of 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 residential units. Um, but what the district can help with is by providing greater variety of housing, higher density of housing. Um, reducing some of the more expensive development pieces, providing more certainty in the development process. Um, to get to building permit, more close, more building permit sooner. Um, and generally increasing the supply of housing available in the city, so. Um, our goal and our and our hope that will um be further addressed with our economic analysis is that. That will help with affordability, but we cannot directly mandate um the price, or even the product mix or the size of the resulting development that comes out of it.
Do you perceive this as more family residential or for the college, since the college is nearby and the high school, I mean, for. But directly across from the college or close to the college, as opposed to residential family type dwellings? Uh, that brings up the affordability for students.
Yeah, you know, I don't know that, um, I think we've left it pretty open, and so I wouldn't wanna hazard a development guess about what product we're more likely to see. Uh, but certainly it's a great opportunity to have residential closer to the college and reduce some of those transportation impacts. So some of the refinements um coming out of our work as well as from the public is, um, as I mentioned, that revision to the southern boundary. Um, taking some of this high, higher density residential and moving it closer to the main street rather than on the edge of the district. Um, looking at some additional density tools, um, such as that, you know, like a green development bonus to make sure that we hit our our development target. Um, we did not hear significant interest in adding cottage industries, and, you know, I'd say professionally, that would also be my recommendation, that there are. Ample opportunities um within the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area for different types of flexible uses. Um, such as, you know, live-work units are allowed in both those mixed use districts and the, um, you know, it's not necessarily a scalable strategy in these residential areas. Um, and also looking at, you know, how the city can support affordability through having a more open zoning code in this area. But not necessarily expecting the city um will directly drive or set prices. And then we get to the east mixed use neighborhood, that's sort of the golden mustardy area. Um, and there, the key aspects that we're looking to implement through the R five zone, um, which is a medium density zone. It's been on the books for a while in the city, uh, but hasn't been applied anywhere, it's really meant for the concept plan areas, and we did significant work on it with the equitable housing code amendments. Um, and so I'd say it's in pretty good shape to apply to this portion of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area. Um, one of the key features is that it allows a large mix of residential types, so everything from cottage clusters like you see here. Um, to single-family detached, you know, like the classic of new development, ADUs, duplexes. Um, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhouses. Um, so we have a lot of, and for each of those development types, we have opportunities for different lot sizes. Um, that range from five thousand square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. Uh, as well as design standards for each type that'll help maintain quality and be consistent. Um, here again, there was discussion about the alley network as well as cottage industries. Um, and same direction on both those items proposed, um, as we discussed earlier. We'll look for some direction from the city commission about alley networks for residential neighborhoods citywide. And that the cottage industries, there was um not significant interest in promoting those in this neighborhood. And one design consideration, as I mentioned, this is on the southern boundary, um, is south Old Acres Lane, uh, is a private road. Private access for those single-family detached, single-family dwellings um to the south. Those are outside of the city's city limits and the urban growth boundary and not expected to be annexed in um or added to the U G B. And so part of the plan is managing that transition. Um, we are anticipating rear lot setbacks along there. Um, and looking, um, I think, you know, at this point, we were looking at some landscaping, we're also looking at some incentives to preserve. Though that row of existing trees, if you've been out there, that's the edge of the golf course right now. Um, so we will have some landscaping standards, and it'll probably be written as an either or, either you preserve what's there, or. You know, if you need to do something else, this is the minimums that are required. Um, and by moving that R two, the multifamily will um be requiring single-family detached uses only along this perimeter. Um, to manage that transition. Okay, so that's um again, just the refinements that we heard throughout this. Um, really, we heard a lot about that southern boundary, so we wanna make sure that we get that right. Um, and yeah, alleys and cottage industries, parks, trails, and open space, we had some questions on this. Um, and we will not, through this project, um, you know, if you go back to that proposed zoning map, we are not directly zoning properties for parks. Um, that's beyond the scope of a zoning map amendment, that's really, you know, um. That would almost rise to the level of a takings or condemnation, so. Um, we can't accomplish that through the zoning map, but instead, we're using this master plan. Um, and those areas will be targeted for acquisition by the city at the time of land division and development. Um, so there is a whole network, there's sort of some different categories here, um, and so we have some variety of tools to help implement them. Um, the dotted brown are the trails network, and so we have a trails master plan that will help guide the acquisition and then future development of those corridors. Um, so, well, I guess I would point out the south central open space network, um, sort of is the the more southern. Obviously, uh, it runs through the rest, with the future residential areas. Um, and that is going to be integrated into the city's parks master plan, and um we'll be working on development and acquisition. Or acquisition and development, right, acquisition comes first. Um, through that tool, there are additionally some natural resource areas, um, for example, Thimble Creek itself. Is all the way on the eastern edge of the district, the largest green blob, um.
Kind of like there.
Yeah, that one, up, 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 yeah, that one. Um, and so that, for example, is covered by the Natural Resources Overlay District, um, the N rod. And so that will limit development there, um, some other portions of the open space shown here are covered. By the N rod and also the geologic hazards overlay, um, that will limit development, and.
Is there an actual Beaver Lake, I see Beaver Lake Regional Trail?
Mm-hmm.
There is a, a lake up there?
The lake is not in the concept plan boundaries, the trail, the regional trail eventually leads to Beaver Lake.
One of my earlier questions was about these green spaces that we see here, are they because they're unusable areas? Uh, or they're a canyon, or why, I I don't often see somebody just say, oh, let's have a park there, there must be a reason.
Um, it's a combination of a lot of things, I think that's what I was trying to allude to, is, um, some of these are. You know, actual natural resources, a canyon or a stream, such as the Thimble Creek area, um, that have already been prioritized for open space. Um, some others, um, as we're going back, seem to have a looser nexus, shall we say. Um, the ra, let's say the rationale is not entirely clear, um, for some of them, and there are, um. It's not always, some of these, for example, there's not a good regulatory mechanism right now to compel preservation. Um, and so, for example, let's take the the green triangle in the middle.
Yep.
Um, so in the plan, the concept plan, that is called the Central Tree Grove, lovely planning concept, right? Um, and as we, as Christina and I have been trying to piece together the history, and Laura can certainly tell me if I'm off base. Um, you know, at one point, the city was having a conversation about um whether the N rod would apply to upland habitat areas, which would be a more extensive. Um, preservation, but in the interim, since this map was adopted, those areas are not part of the N rod, and so. The N rod portion of that triangle is really only about half the area, and so now the city's in the position. Um, of using the regulatory tools that we have to implement this concept plan, we won't be looking at a triangle that size, it'll be a different size. Um, and likely smaller than that to implement the in, the concept, but not, um, but to use the tools that we have now.
I asked the question because in the Park Place Concept Plan and the South End, I've not seen this much green space or greenery, and I know it's usually electrical wires or something like that, but. I like upland, you were talking about upland, and we looked seriously about the fact that Abernathy Creek, which I think is bigger than Thimble Creek. Runs down along Redland Road, but there's, but all the wildlife lives in the hills and in the canyons above that, but there's no green space saved for them. And so I'm seeing a kind of a different look at this versus Park Place or South End.
You know, each three concept plan went through their own public process, there are three different deliverables, and so our, you know, we really are. We're really tasked to look at what is in the plan, what were the goals of the plan? And then how can we as a city implement, knowing it's two thousand nineteen, so we have to get in our, in the head of everybody in two thousand eight. And there may be, so assumptions have changed, and one thing I just wanna um highlight, 'cause I think this is a key point that often gets missed, which is. These are opportunities for open space, um, what they're saying is this will be further refined, so an example. Um, under the power lines, um, you know, the the trail uh design, you know, when we look at um doing trail design. You know, it's more like a twenty-foot corridor, the trail at the end, not a hundred and twenty-foot corridor, so there may be a situation where. Somewhere within the boundary of the power line, a smaller trail corridor will be built. And at the time of development, we can kind of figure out the right alignment, so some of these larger areas may be further refined at the top of time of development. Because we won't really know exactly where that trail corridor may fit until really someone comes in and we start looking at the topography and, well. This part of the, this part of the uh easement goes down low, so we can't really put, we can put it here, so maybe the trail shifts over here, so. When we're looking at the implementation, it's how do you take these, quite a lot of green, and see what our city code is, so we'll look at. What is our trail segment, and I can't, I don't wanna quote it off head, but I know it's not a hundred and forty feet wide. It's much smaller than that, so that means I'll be further refined that trail, and another example for the open space network. Um, that park is not gonna be exactly what you see there, that what we're hearing is we wanna have a linear type park. But our parks master plan has some requirements of what type of park, like if this is a, I forget, the neck, not a local park, but the next size up community park has to be so much square footage. Which so much dimensions, so, you know, this is maybe the area we want a larger park, but then, of course, you go through that refinement to figure out. And it may be kind of a string of pearl approach, where you might have a linear corridor that maybe has three larger, you know. Polygon areas or larger kind of areas, and then they're kind of threaded together, so the whole park is longer, but it may not be that exact boundary. So this kind of translation from the watercolor to, okay, what is the city gonna acquire and build and do that, sorry?
Perfect.
That is what we're, that's, that's the hard part we're trying to figure out.
So the reason why I asked that question is because these both, this plan and and South End Park Place came about about two thousand eight, about around the same time. Yet there seems to be more emphasis on green space here, is that to make more of an appeal to the general public to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer, they said that they all went through their own concept planning process, and they had their own targets and goals, and they met metro's requirements, but. Uh, they're, they're three different, we have to look at each as three distinct documents, and we have to look at what. For an example, and I hate to go off a little bit, Park Place and South End have a very specific discussion in their adopted plans about design standards for housing. Like what their goals are and how they wanna look at it. This, this pa, this um adopted plan really doesn't touch on it at all, and so it's, so on our end, you know, for example, if we as a city staff. Wrote, you know, a fifteen-page design standards for single-family, we don't have any code, we don't have any text in the concept plan to. To, to, to tie it back to, so we're trying to say what was in the plan, what were the goals, um, how was it talked about, and that is really our. Our guideline of how we're gonna be using, uh, how we're gonna be implementing it, so we kind of go back to the adopted plan.
And the other thought I had about that is knowing how parks is and Rex is cramped for money. I mean, are these kind of green spaces, would they be owned by the city, or would you think the H O A would adopt them, right, 'cause the city can't afford any more parks, apparently?
So, uh, once, I think it's this goal, what can zoning do to provide minimum abilities to make sure that there's some open space? And then what can our parks department, through their parks master planning, our acquisition, looking at, you know, any potential developer agreements? There's a point where zoning can get you so far, and then other piece of the process can kind of resolve it, so we what, we don't wanna tie. We don't wanna provide zoning that's so specific that we can't come up with creative approaches, but we also don't wanna be so hands-off. That the whole site develops and nobody got around to finding land for parks.
Okay, thanks for answering.
Yeah. Yeah, and so this is sort of our first um, first application of the tools that we have to implement those green spaces, and so. Um, you know, as I mentioned, the N rod is the light green, the orange hatching is the geologic hazard area. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that no development is pres, is permitted in the geologic hazard area, but there are some limitations. Um, we've also highlighted the power line corridor, as Christina mentioned, um, those are a pretty significant feature running through the district. Um.
Where is the power line?
It is in the gray, it runs all through the industrial area, so, um, there are some ideas about um threading a trail network through there. Um, a lot of vertical development is prohibited by the, by the Eastmans with B P A. Um, so it certainly makes sense as a, as a development opportunity for some open space. Um, but certainly the city will not be acquiring all of that gray area of the power line. Um, and then that south central open space, um, with sort of the, the string of pearls, linear park idea. Um, as you see, is in the purple, goes through some of the, the um residential areas, okay?
Do you know if the power lines on this are gonna be underground for coming from those power corridors, I mean, are, is like, are they just city trying to push more underground?
So all new development, Oregon City needs to have um underground um power, uh, that's where we start with, and then you work with our public works department. If there's just an existing condition that doesn't allow that, but we start with the, the code that says you should have underground power. And then if there's any, it's a lot, it's a lot harder when you have existing development sometimes, but when it's all brand new, it's a little bit easier just to be.
With the city's recent conversation about five G network, can that be underground, I know they wanna put it on, on poles all around the city, but is that something that has to go on a pole, or can it go underground on these?
Well, I think for, I guess my, this is my not, my planning answer, my not engineer, my planning answer is, we don't anticipate any changes in the Beaver Creek area. So anything that's a citywide code will be a citywide code in Beaver Creek about how infrastructure, especially private infrastructure is developed.
Okay.
Okay, next one? Um, and then just to sort of let you know what our next steps will be in refining these policies. Um, before you, we are leaning on some of our experts to make sure that we hit those development targets. Um, so probably the area that we have heard the most public comments about so far is traffic and transportation. Um, and so the city has commissioned a very detailed traffic analysis to answer these questions. Um, you know, the city really, to their credit, has greatly expanded the scope of the traffic analysis that they had originally been intending to do. Just to make sure that we fully answer all the questions um with this project. Um, so looking at what are the traffic generation um models anticipated with the scale of new development? And then what's the impact of that traffic, both within the concept plan area and beyond, that's really where we get most of the questions is. You know, where are all those cars gonna go, and how does that affect Beaver Creek Road, and um, you know, in particular, the sizing of. And, um, you know, in particular, the sizing of Beaver Creek Road is envisioned in the plan as a three-lane cross-section, um, through most of this concept plan area. And the traffic, transportation analysis will evaluate multiple configurations, including a three-lane and a five-lane section. Um, and then also be looking at the intersection design for, I believe there's five intersections of Beaver Creek Road through, in this concept plan area. And so be looking at some options for signals or roundabouts at those and how those impact transportation capacity. Um, we have a utility capacity analysis for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater underway to make sure that they can handle the proposed development loads. And then also Eco Northwest is performing a market feasibility analysis, um, to review the code as amended to make sure that it supports the development of those 5,000 jobs and 1,000, um, housing units to implement the plans, um, the plan.
On the sites in the Beaver Creek Road, are they inviting the public to participate? I mean, as we heard out those nights, we were there, I mean, with all the public coming and going and already Beaver Creek with, with three lanes and several sections is backing up in the mornings and at nighttime. And I know a lot of people are saying it's gonna need wider than that with industrial jobs or new homes. Are, so are you gonna invite public?
A technical analysis, um, so.
A lot of people feel when the city has somebody do a technical analysis for traffic, and we've heard in the past, it's on the side of the city or the side of the developer, not on the side of the citizens.
Well, I think the way I'm kind of laying it out, um, you know, the traffic consultant's gonna provide us kind of like, you know, a lot of times you, you push something this way and it goes that way and you push something this way and it goes this way. You know, what are the, um, you know, what happens to the system when you stay at three lanes? I'm sure there's some good things to the system and some things that, you know, push this way. When you go to five, you know, these things are better resolved, but now you have this issue. So we're trying to lay out kind of, uh, I don't wanna say pros and cons, but we're trying to lay out kind of the issues surrounding both options. And really, um, we'd like for the city commission to, and the planning commission to provide more direction, but if Beaver Creek Road is three or five la- five lanes is not absolutely required to be decided as part of these zoning code updates? I mean, so when you say, you know, we're gonna really be going back to, you know, our, um, elected officials and our appointed boards, saying, this is what we've learned, this is what the code says, this is kind of the upsides and downsides, this is what we're learning about roundabouts versus signals, this is what's happening. And, um, you know, what, what do you think? I know on our end for the apartments, there was this larger conversation. And so for the apartments, they are proposing to build a three-lane segment, but we acquired dedication for a five lane. So even two years ago, we knew this was kind of a thing and so we were able to find a way to get legally the, the five-lane segment, knowing that, um, that they were a key piece cause they're, they're intersection of Myers Road and Beaver Creek. So we didn't want that project to set the tone if there was a different direction. So, um, kind of both options are still on the table, but there are upsides and downsides to both, ready, push and pull. So in, uh, when we get these, um, uh, memos finished, uh, we hope to have our transportation engineer come and kind of walk through. And then really we're looking at the direction of the city commission is how, how much more do you wanna, you know, noodle and digest on this issue? Is it, you know, is it pretty straightforward? Do you feel like there's a, you know, that, that, the answer on a technical question? Or is there still, is the, is the community not quite at the same place that everyone else is and do we need to have more of a process? So as Elizabeth said, the first step is to get this technical analysis, to understand kind of what are the impacts of these different designs and then reaching out. And once again, does not necessarily have to be 100% tied to the zoning code updates, but we need to, we should as a community have a general decision soon.
And Christine, part of the reason I asked that question is we've heard it before on Redland Road with all the development going out that way. And the Red, I asked if the residents were gonna be included in the conversation. We all know what happened on Sunnyside Road when they only made it two lanes and all of a sudden they realized after building all the homes, oh, they can't get in a, in and out very easily. So then they had to widen it, which even more disrupted the Sunnyside area and all the development going there. So I'd hate to see all this development take place in all these areas without proper planning of transportation for the citizens, or they're all gonna get upset if they're not listened to. That's where I was heading with that.
Yeah, and you know, as you know, uh, we can't, uh, if we listened to everybody and tried to implement everyone's goals, we would have a very odd cons, I mean, we would code. So I think what we can, we can promise the staff is to provide you all of the information you need to have a collaborative discussion, both with the planning commission and the city commission to figure out next steps.
And I think what I heard that night when I asked somebody about it, infrastructures such as traffic, well, you don't have enough money to build the roads now, so you have to wait until you sell some of the land, sell some of it, so you have more, um, money to do more infrastructure. I'm not sure if that comes from system development charges, like.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think one of the things that.
See, just a concerning look on Laura's face.
No, I think one of the comments, and this, this goes into a larger of, you know, how system development charges are done with our capital improvement program. And a lot of people, I think, in the public don't realize that system development fees are, are paid for increase in growth. So a lot of projects that, you know, that I've identified, um, kind of officially on the Beaver Creek corridor are paid for by growth. And so you can't use, you know, our, that, you know, the, the money that comes in, uh, the STCs, we can't use to fix existing conditions. So it's that push and pull of sometimes it takes growth to raise the money to pay for the project that can provide more capacity. And it's, it, it's a, a lot of things, people think it's counterintuitive, but that's how our system for, our system is created for how we raise money to do projects.
But you understand what I was referring to, like in Sunnyside, I'd hate to see that happen to the people in Beaver Creek.
So, you know, I, I think at some point when the staff, they, um, you know, we're gonna lay out what we hear from our consultants. And I think it's exact, as long as you have in your head that, that, if there was a clear solution, we would have already decided it. So.
It's money.
Every, no, no, but I mean, there's also livability pieces to widening it. There's also a place where you can widen a, a, a section of a road, but if it goes back down to a point again, sometimes all the money you spent for widening it doesn't necessarily resolve the capacity issue. So we had some of that discussions in our 2013 transportation system plan where, you know, we could have a really, I mean, perfect example is we had a really great, uh, capacity improving project on 15th and Washington, but then we couldn't, that project, that there wasn't a resolution at, you know, 99E and, and 15th. So you spent all this money to improve capacity and then the next light, you couldn't. So was that the best way to use your money? Is there a different way to use your money that could help safety or capacity or something else? So it's, it's really, what's the best way to use the money we have in a way to support safety and capacity and all the, those push and pulls? And so I think that's what, um, we're gonna have that when we were able to propose that.
Does the state help it at all? I know with 213, we've had the conversation that we're passed through city, all these outer communities and there's some further out Beaver Creek. I mean, they're all coming through.
So I'm gonna give a great planning answer again, which is the zoning code can do so much. So don't look for the zoning code to solve all of our transportation problems. If there's issues that you still are like, oh God, you know, like I understand the limits of the zoning code, but we as a community need to do this, well, then that's a larger policy decision by our elected officials. And so there's, there's, and it's hard, you know, especially for the general public, but, you know, as a planning commission, learning like what are the limits of the zoning code? What makes sense that we can do in zoning? And if there are still issues that are left, you felt unresolved, what are the other avenues that a city could work on to pursue, pursue resolution of these kind of, and you feel unresolved issues? And so as Elizabeth always remind me, the zoning code can do a lot, but it can't, it can't do everything.
What I was referring to, if we're considered a hub of, of the area, shouldn't the state be participating more with the roads? And do we think there ever come a time where the state does give us a little bit more funding for our roads being that we are a hub?
So I think my past answer is exactly the same thing. I mean, there's this point like zoning is zoning and we can do as much as we can. And then as a community, if we feel there are unresolved issues, how do we put our heads together and have that larger strategic discussion about where else do we reach out to?
And I did just wanna, um, acknowledge that we had, uh, last year, a really great, um, meeting regarding transportation and how we do a transportation review. Uh, John Ripringle, our transportation consultant came. I, I can send the, just because we have three new, uh, planning commissioners, I can send you the link to that discussion, but essentially it talks about these, the layering of times that we review our transportation system, both as a network as a whole and then with increasing specificity of like development applications again and again and again. And so, um, I can send that to you guys if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you.
This is the last slide?
That's it?
Yeah.
So, um, we've asked a lot, we've answered and asked a, you've asked and we've answered a lot of questions over the time.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna speak here.
Um, I know Mr. Edgar wants to speak tonight, but we're open for just general questions. Um, and all three of us are here. If you wanna, anything you were holding on to while we were presenting and you wanna ask now, we're more than happy to kind of have a collaborative conversation.
I've run out of questions.
I know.
But sorry, sorry to my team again up here, it's just that I've been around this for a long time and.
They're all great questions.
Mm-hmm, they were. If you didn't ask him, somebody else is probably thinking it, right?
Yeah.
Sometimes you don't even know what to, most of the, those years, I didn't even know what to ask until I became more familiar with it.
Everybody?
Oh, I guess I have one. Who, the, the power lines, was that Bonneville?
Mm-hmm, those situations is Bonneville. We have other places in the city which is, which is PGE, but these are Bonneville lanes.
So anything built underneath it, you have to contact them?
They can, you can't actually build anything in easements, so.
Build a road underneath it.
You can put a road, you can put a structure. So you can put a road, you might be able to put a parking lot, you might be able to have some outdoor storage.
Some of the fence.
Might be able to do a fence. Uh, any trees, they do have a, they do have a very big limitation. It's like the little, little, little trees. Uh, and so there, the power line, that's an easement and that's apparently gives, um, it's a pretty broad easement. And then you kind of negotiate with BPA what, what they generally allow. We've been reading some of the easements, cause we've been working with them on Myers Road Extension.
Right.
And so there is also some height requirements. So like, um, moving cars, they allow the distance between the moving car and the power line to be a little bit shorter, whereas sitting cars, because they can, um, obtain a stat- obtain a charge because they're standing still, they have a higher. So like there's some just specificity. So when it comes to development of what you can build, um, they, you know, we have some general direction, but it really, it's at the time of development, the owner will be working with Bonneville Power Administration on their easement and what they can and can't. And, you know, what, what you can and can't today in 2019 may be different than 2040, but the easement is the legal thing that, that covers it.
Health also?
Hmm.
Health also because they can't build family residential so close to the lines? Is that part of it?
No, it's, it's, it's a develop, it's a building easement. You cannot build a structure inside the easement. And then there's, and there's some further, but what I'm saying is when you look at the easement on paper, it's a lot, um, it's, it's, um, not as specific. And then you, then the BPA has some further refined requirements. And then sometimes it's site-specific. So you, the, each property owner will work, or if the city is working on a trail, will work with BPA at the time of development. So I will, we want, so like I can give you a page where I have all the specifics. It's a little bit more of a negotiation.
I asked about the health because I thought there was something about cancer. If you lived under electrical wires that people were suing across the nation because of health.
Concerns, I don't believe that they've been substantiated, but, but the good news here is that, one, we don't have any residential plan for that district, so not a con- not a conflict. Um, and also, you know, I think in, in terms of what your zoning code can and cannot do for you, um, it really, we don't have to get, it's not a job for zoning code because the easement already limits that vertical development and already addresses what can and can't be done in those easements. And so, you know, the property owners will come to the city for a permit and they simultaneously need to be working out with Bonneville what they can develop within the terms of the easement, but it's not the city's job to enforce the easement.
Can I presume that with the lot sizes that we're seeing from two to, to as far as up as five, that we won't be seeing any lot averaging in this area since it's already pretty structured the way it is?
So I, I think we're not recommending any changes to the zoning district as adopted by equitable housing. So I know that, that issue is still out there, the lot averaging. So we're gonna, we're waiting, just like alleys are direction, uh, by the city commission and the planning commission on that issue. So I guess the answer is we're not gonna propose any different lot averaging, that is decided citywide.
Okay.
And just to walk back to the power line conversation real quick, I wanted to acknowledge that they're high voltage, but the BPA, the Bonneville Power Administrative Lines, Administration Lines are high voltage lines and that's why some of these restrictions are different than the power lines you would see in front of your house.
Could you tell that? You know?
Do you know how much voltage it is?
For the audience, what's that?
You know how high, how high the voltage is?
I do not.
Because I, I, behind CCC, it was two cents, one definitely crackles more than the other. So I figured that one must be more, it's DC or there's some kind of a difference. Don't know.
I know, there is a cool tool.
Yeah.
PGE.
I know for the law, in run, you do DC.
The farther apart the individual wires are, the higher the voltage.
Yeah.
Because they need to be farther apart so they don't arc across.
Right.
That makes sense. And, and they're starting to do noise suppression on Bonneville lines.
Really?
When you live next to Bonneville lines and it's foggy or rainy or misty outside.
Yeah.
You'd swear the roar coming from those, you're down on the beach. And the range of that. Now, and I lived next to one of them for quite a number of years, between a Bonneville and a PGE line. The PGE line never made any noise because it's low voltage.
Yeah.
Lower voltage. The Bonneville made, made you, transported you down to the coast 80 miles away and you heard this constant noise until the sun came out and dried everything out. But today, it's better than it was 15 years ago on the Bonneville line because they put noise suppression.
Huh. What do you suppress that?
Under the system.
I don't know, I know the insulators look different now.
They didn't change significantly on the insulators. I, I don't know.
Is it the type of wire?
Yeah. And, and they do all of the work.
Standard phone.
The easement for all of these power lines started out with Bonneville or PGE had to drive to the towers and go up the towers and do the work.
Yeah.
That's, that's what's driving the no housing or no buildings.
Yeah, but now they're using helicopters, now they're stringing them with helicopters. They don't even need to go underneath them anymore, really.
But they, they don't, they don't drive to these towers anymore.
Not as much.
It's all done by helicopter and, and they do it 20 times faster than with.
There was a guy that hangs from a fast.
Which is a good reason why we're not putting zoning, because, um, we're, you know, BPA over the years has control of their easement on what they will and will not allow on it and that may change over time.
Okay.
Done with them.
And if you.
Thank you so much.
If you wanted to call up, uh, Mr. Edgar, oh, here.
Sorry it took so long with questions, Paul. Sorry we're out of time now, Paul.
And I'll add this, um, into our Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan file.
Thank you. Some of you know me, uh, I've been very active in planning and stuff like, uh, transportation. I've been on the county's Veterans Advisory Council, Transportation Committee of the County. And I've been working in land use, but, and on the Historic Preservation or Historic Review Board for the county. But one of the things that of great interest to me, and it's even right here on this pin that I have, and it's called the VA Home Front and Veteran Homelessness. I'm a veteran. And I've been lucky. A lot of my friends are not here. And I, we run a day center called, uh, Fort Kennedy. It's on Johnson Creek Road. And we'll have 30 or 40 homeless veterans come in virtually every day and they get food and clothes and basic essentials to try to keep them alive. A lot of them just live in their own worlds. basic essentials to try to keep them alive. A lot of them just live in their own worlds. We have a philosophy as a kind of like a hand up, not a handout. We try to, try to leverage people carefully. And we maintain case files on over five hundred veterans in Plaquemines County that we have worked with or tried to, and most of them are a high majority we have in housing now. But the ongoing problem of equitable housing or affordable housing just doesn't go away with today's costs. And so the reason why I'm here is not to rewrite the Beaver Creek Concept Plan in any way, shape or form. But it's how you implement some of these zoning of their, and how do we think smart? And one of the issues that I'd like to talk to you about is thinking smart. And we, when somebody doesn't have any money, one of the first things I did when I went to a Portland State College, University, you know, now, but was, can somebody really afford a car when they don't have hardly anything, or should they have one? And so transit, sometimes I have my troubles with Trinet and some of what they're doing, but transit's critical. And we need to have the ability for somebody to walk and bike. And right across the street is Claquemines Community College from this property. Walking distance. Transit isn't walking distance. We have to have this, grocery stores are within walking distance. And if I put them clear down at the far end, down at the south end, that's not true. And so what we have is a potential person that owns the property, who fully supports veterans. And this area may not be all veterans, because in my heart, I realize that we have to, I have addressed everyone that's as best as we can. So, but in a cluster development, what you end up doing is you create the cluster around and the porches and everything look to the middle. And you have a common area, and you have an area where people are interacting with people. People begin to know people. And people help people. And in veteran worlds, that's really true. They reach out, they know, they help, they do whatever they can to make sure that somebody doesn't fall by the wayside. So here we have a chance to create a walking community where they can walk, bike, get to things without minimizing cars and looking at transit and other modes, where we are very friendly with the transit, transportation system. Number, in these things, we also have this opportunity to say, okay, we have the college, and we have the award-winning veteran educational plan for job skills, right across the street. So we can bring people in, veterans, take them right into an educational plan right across the street, and we can train them specifically for the economic developments that surround the people. What do people want? And the school will put together a curriculum to help them, to get them lifted up out of their circumstances into a better circumstance. Now, if we can get a grant to buy the property, we give the buyer or seller some, a tax write-off, because he's doing, working with a 501(c)(3). What we end up doing is, then we have an ability to, to do a master plan effectively at HOA over this whole area. And what we do is, we sell the lots. We divide this thing up, and we sell them a lot at way below market. And we allow them to put together a manufactured home on the site at a price that eliminates ninety percent of the SDC fees. A funny money. The, what we're really talking about is trying to come up with something where people can have the pride and dignity of homeownership. Compare that, just compare it to being in a four-story condo-type slice of an apartment, and your kids and everything, all they ever see is an elevator. We want to have solar panels on the roofs, we want to have garden areas where they can plant and have a, have a sustainable garden areas out there, or we can have a food pantry where, where people come in. I was out doing home, counting homeless people. And I'm out in Estacada, and all of a sudden I see this, these pantries, and I say, where do we, where do we need to go? And my, there was just more people out there with need in these pantries, and I've seen how successful, however, the pantries are. And the leaders that we have that go out and do these things, we need to have places where we can, in a, within these cluster development, where we can really hit home. We could make sure that these kids, and the number of kids that are homeless in the Oregon City School District right now is alarming. It's out of control. So we, why is that? They can't afford an apartment or a home. Now, I'm just, this is just a plan that could, we, we put this up right next to housing, we take and put an alleyway around it so that we're, there's kind of any access that comes in. There's not cars parked in front of these places. There, we're looking out into, into the central area. So this is an idea that has, we've all talked about, it just happens we have a place. This could create a hundred and forty-four potential R2 lots. Homes, affordable homes. We could have a home where somebody could buy a home and a lot and have it for under eighty thousand. Right now, to build that equivalent home, like down at the Veteran Village that they're building on, just off of, by Northwest Housing off of Mulholland, those are three hundred thousand dollars a unit on average to build. And then we rent them on public, full, public subsidies. And costs and everything. Compare that to something, and I'm saying, okay, they buy the lot, they buy the motor, the manufactured home, we put it onto the property, it's a done deal, fully, the money comes back in. What is the comparison cost on government subsidies? Out of everyone's pocketbook. So we have this chance. This, I believe this model needs to be implemented all over the Portland Metro region. And I just would like to think that Oregon City is innovative enough, and we're positive enough, and we can think through this thing well enough, where we said, okay, we'll take the lead. We'll show people how to make something like this happen. We'll show them how you do something together, and, and it's not going to be me or just you, but it's going to be a, a team effort of people saying, now we've got a chance, let's do something and do it smarter than we've been doing it, and we haven't been doing things very smart. So I'm hoping through all of this that I can recruit you people. I, by the way, this stuff was all sent up to all of the city commissioners and the mayor. I, I, I didn't want to leave you guys out of the loop. Okay?
Okay.
And I, and I, Mike is not here, but I sent him a copy.
Okay.
So Mike has a copy.
All right.
The intention is, is let's just work together. Let's think positively and creatively about how you could do some things. And that north end, right close to where people don't have to walk, or people don't have to drive, where they can walk and bike and get to the stores, it just makes a heck of a lot of sense. And if we could do this, this would satisfy virtually the equitable housing needs of the city for five years, based upon percentages that are rattling around. By the way, tomorrow night, or tomorrow at one thirty, there's going to be a presentation put on by Metro on equitable housing at the chamber. And I sent off notification to Laura, and I, it would be something if you're concerned about equitable housing, you're concerned about what the Metro bond issue is going to mean. This is an example to get your head on it, but there's nothing that they're going to talk about that's going to be better than this. And my hope is, is that you guys can, can work with us. It's just a piece of putty. Let's mold it to be smart. That's all I'm asking. Mold it to be smart. We've got a location, we've got, we've got all the pieces that can be put together, and if we work together, we can win. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Paul, who buys that, that lot? The city, or, or does somebody, a developer donate that, that parcel, or how would that come about?
Through, I have spent many of hours in front of the owner. Okay, I have a personal relationship with the owner. And, but I can't go and go like this, or we can't get into some.
Right.
Unless I have some idea that we have a, we have the ability to make something like this happen.
To incorporate it in the concept.
If it could be incorporated into this draft, these draft adjustments right now, into the little places up there where you turn around and say, well, we could put them here, or we could put this there. Well, all, in the big picture, you've got four hundred and fifty-three acres that you're talking about. Just move eight point four acres and move them into that area. That's all I'm, I'm not trying to adjust everything, but I think that this is an opportunity. By the way, also, if you think about putting some of the roads, put the roads close to the BP power, power lines and the, and the right, and the lines between property owners. Because if you can do it right along some of those property lines, you could actually save a lot of money and make it much easier to happen. I've been in property development.
So Paul, again, would the, would the person who owns the land donate the land for this use, or are you saying that the city has to?
I, I've asked the, the state of Oregon to participate in their equitable housing in a grant. And I've, and I've also been asking Metro to participate. Once you get the land, you've got to get it professionally laid out.
Right.
And then you've got to get the infrastructure in. But if you think about it, we're paying seven point one million for twenty-four units. And we need a lot more than twenty-four.
If you do get a grant, then who actually owns the property while it's being developed?
We would, it would go into the hands of a, of a nonprofit. Okay, and the nonprofit, one of the reasons why we wanted to use Fort Kennedy of 501(c)(3), we were just recently honored by Plaquemines County as one of the, of the nonprofits of the year. Okay, so we're, we're legitimately considered to be a reviewed and thought of entity, but it's a, I would, one thing we want to do is, when we have the ability to leverage veterans, we, that gives us an added tool to leverage.
Okay, but it would, it would be open to all low income, not just the veterans?
There may be a cluster as an example. I talked to the, to the board, Plaquemines County School Board, or Boarded. And Chris Groner there about this, and he said, boy, we need student housing, you know, right around the college, and we don't have anything. And so you, we need to be thinking smart about how we can address some of those issues, because education is our future. If we don't have an educated next generation, we're all screwed. And, and this is an opportunity to, to bring a lot of pieces together. I would be very happy to think and work with anybody. I, this is, again, it's clay, let's mold it the smartest way we can, but let's mold it to win and create something positive that people can afford.
Paul, I know we need to move on, but I'm going to ask, are you the only advocate for this, or is there somebody else who's pushing this? Do you have any state, county, anybody else helping you, or is it just only Fort Kennedy?
Well, Fort, Fort Kennedy is, is one of the people, but I've been on a lot of other boards in advocating for homelessness and, and what it is, and so that's one of the reasons why I'm very concerned about the overall picture, about creating affordability for housing. And, and I know the dignity, the dignity issue is critical, that we have, we be able to create dignity in people. And this is, a cluster development like this is a real opportunity.
Okay, one last thing. And then what it's done, is all private ownership, they own it, no management?
They own it. They own their lots. It may be an HOA type of thing, because we want to have some ability to maintain the common areas.
Yeah.
Okay, and, but they own their parcel, they will be able to resell their parcel.
Okay, at, at market rates.
At, at market rates. Yeah. So it, it, there's going to be some people that will make some money if we do this right, because a manufactured home park over there, where they're charging seven or eight hundred dollars a month for rent, space rent.
But there will be no regulations on who they can sell it to?
Where, that may be an issue that we, if we have a veteran cluster, we may want to have veterans in it. But it's very careful. You got, it's.
I was wondering, is there some kind of oversight after it's done?
Yeah.
Who manages, who gets to live there, and who to consult?
It's, 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 it's above my pay grade to try to, I would prefer.
It just kind of sounds like the Oregon man are out there on Holcomb where it's, it's low income and it's managed by the county for the federal government or HUD, I don't know.
HUD. But, but I, I would prefer not to have HUD, because what, all of a sudden, you get too much government oversight.
But they're the ones who usually deal with homeless.
And it loses its direction.
Okay, I think we need to.
Yeah.
To move on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Paul.
So just on planning's end, well, I'll have this in the record, and I'll direct Elizabeth to just provide some initial comments as part of her, her memo moving forward.
Okay.
That's the end of the meeting?
Oh, yeah, sorry. We have another PowerPoint.
Yay, powerful.
Is it?
All right.
That's it?
Are you adjourned?
No, I got one more thing for you. So I wanted to talk about our comprehensive plan, which I'm sure we've all read and memorized. Comprehensive plan is our guiding document for the city. Christina was talking about watercolors. I'm not sure this is the more. This is the canvas with the outline that the watercolor then goes on. So this, it identifies our city values. It identifies how we deal with growth. It identifies what's important to us. Some examples include, yes.
It's a white show.
You can find this on our website. I'll send you guys each a link.
I can only see it to the front of it.
Hundred and forty-eight pages without appendices, and it's fine. It talks about a variety of topics, and I'll, I'll show you about them in just a minute. So we have this comprehensive plan, it was adopted in two thousand and four. It is required by state law. It's not required to be updated by us right now. Well, it's not being enforced, but it, generally, they last twenty years, so you want to kind of pick it up and look again every so often to make sure you're moving forward on the plan. It is formatted to dovetail with our state land use goals, so it shows how we meet other requirements that are higher than us, like citizen participation, protection of our natural resources, that sort of thing. This document is what we review all other planning documents really against. When we're doing these concept plan implementations, the code amendments, any large policy documents, we go through here, and we look for goals and policies which are applicable, and make sure, make findings for each of those to show how we meet these. So this is very important. Other than the charter, I think this is the most important thing at the city, because this sets the tone for what our code is and all these other important things that we do. So there's been a lot of changes in our community since two thousand and four. We've probably changed a little bit as a population. The circumstances in which we live our lives have changed, certainly. In two thousand and four, Amazon didn't exist. We know that there's, autonomous cars didn't exist. There's some urban design impacts for some of these things. Facebook was just getting invented, so, you know, like, we didn't use it. So the world, the way in which we interact with our world is changing a little bit. And also, there's a growing, what's that?
I said a lot is changing.
It's changed a lot. And really, our, some of our citizens are struggling. It's some of the highest costs to our households are transportation and land use. And we are at the tail end of code amendments, which include equitable housing, but should we take a look at these larger goals and policies to make sure that we are supporting all of our community equally? Are there people that didn't participate in this that we missed? Are, are there goals and policies in here that are missing an underrepresented group? These are things that we want to make sure that we know about and improve on. So those are the sections of the comp plan that are listed. Those are the major topics. So it's broken out by basically the nineteen statewide planning goals. And so we're going to go through a code amendment. You can switch it now, please. There's also a map, there's also a map that goes with this. In the land use section of this, it refers to some comprehensive plan map or something like that, which is the basis for zoning zones. like that, which is the basis for zoning zones. So all we know, like for example, our low density residential zoning designations are all within our, our ten, eight and six are all within the low density residential zoning designation. So it means a lot. These maps mean a lot, these policies and goals mean a lot. Can you do the next slide, please?
So the map changed since two thousand and four because it's dated two thousand and nine?
If someone does a zone change, I mean a comp plan amendment change, then that would change the map.
Because I noticed Park Place said, it says mixed use corridor, but it wasn't annexed in at the time in two thousand and nine.
I think the Park Place, Concept Plan was implemented, so the Concept Plan, so the comprehensive plan.
So it includes Concept Plans just prior to annexation?
It goes to the city urban growth boundary. So it's beyond that, it's looking at these places that could.
So it's regularly updated since, with the last time it was two thousand and four, you said it was created, so it's updated gradually with these maps and things?
We set the tone in two thousand and four and beyond that, it's been people who want to tweak it in little places. So for example, where our building is, was zoned residential and we did a zone change and a comprehensive plan amendment to institutional. So there's these little developments that have happened recently. We haven't seen a whole lot, but more closer to two thousand and four, we probably saw some comprehensive plan amendments to maybe perhaps move towards high density or something like that.
Those amendments come through the Planning Commission or go directly to City Commission or just thrown in there?
Everything we're talking to you about tonight all goes through a Planning Commission, the City Commission. So the community is the decision maker, the City Commission who you elect is the decision maker, you provide recommendations to them. So every, you all are the decision makers for all of these big picture policies, including concept plan implementations. But the metrics to which you make your decision are our goals and policies here. And so this, that's why this is so important because a lot of our decisions are based on these. So I have before you a draft memorandum and if you choose to sign it. But what we're doing is we're applying for some grants to fund the comprehensive plan update. It rose to meet the City Commission's goals for their twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one biennium is to do this comprehensive plan update. They heard from the community that it's time that we take this look back at our big picture plans and policies and make sure that we're still meeting them and those are still covering all of our citizens. And so we're going to apply for a couple different grants. One is a transportation growth management grant through ODOT. And then there's another one through DLCD for technical assistance. And so for this first grant is coming due soon and so that's where I'm talking to you now about it. So what we're going to do is apply for that TGM grant for transportation and land use component. So we'll, we'll do a big community visioning as a whole, for the whole city and identify what do we want to be when we grow up? What, what kind of world do you want your grandkids living in and how are, and then from that we'll pull out these goals and policies and then we'll update each of the sections of the comp plan accordingly. So, I need to say that one more time so it was a little bit quick. We're going to go through a very in-depth community engagement process. The purpose of this update is to make sure that we equally support all of our citizens. In order to make a plan that does that, you need to engage all of your citizens. So we're talking about in-depth community engagement that we haven't done before. We are talking about strategies to meet people where they're at and not hold an open house or a public hearing and expect them to come. And also leveraging all of our existing community groups and staff and services to do that too. So we would expect lots of public participation, public participation from our boards and committees to act as ambassadors, to go out to groups and talk to them and solicit more information and opinions and we'll have visual preference surveys and those kind of things. We want to make sure that we invest in our neighborhood associations and give them tools that they can present the project and solicit feedback and give those information to us as well. But we also want to make sure that we are reaching out to those groups that we haven't reached out to before and make sure that there aren't any groups that are getting left behind. So though we're leveraging a lot of the groups and committees that we see all the time, I want to talk to the people I've never met and I want to know what they want to see. And if there are any of these goals and policies that are a problem or maybe they're all successful, I don't know. So we'll do this public engagement and that will be step one and then we'll create an advisory committee and we'll have a lot of process to take all these comments and distill it down to a community vision. And that community vision will then become the first part of our comprehensive plan. That'll be the, what are we doing, what, what do we want to be when we grow up? And then the chapters after that will be, as they relate to those elements, how we get there? How does this vision relate to the transportation system and how do we look at trade-offs when we have competing interests between multiple items?
Is this going to, I, I heard you mention neighborhood associations and other such things. I know there was a, recently a survey sent out to Kenema that didn't really come from the city apparently. So I'm wondering, are, are you thinking about surveys? Hopefully not, because that doesn't go to everybody, even in the UGB. But are, are you planning on an article in the local paper? How are you going to reach out to?
Right.
Everybody in the city? Instead of just three hundred feet from where this Thormont.
I have a list of like twenty different strategies. I totally agree with you that nothing reaches everybody and we need to do lots of things to reach everybody. We're talking, we need to talk to PTA, we need to have programs where we go into the schools and talk to the children. We need to go to churches. We have a, one of the things in the grant is to have a, like a visual preference survey and some other materials, where we create stands and those stands or interactive displays get feedback from the public. And you place them maybe at every church for a couple of weeks and then on, maybe once a month, we also sit at a coffee shop and host these conversations. We reach out to groups, we figure out who we should talk to. So you talk to one person and then you get five more names of someone to talk to and then you talk to those people and get more names. I mean, we need to work with the county to see who they work with that are in Oregon City and talk to those people.
And who are going to be all the people that go out to meet all these people and do, I mean, I, I understand.
I think I'm looking at them, but you're also looking at them.
Take you to a Trailblazer game and announce it at mid-court.
I mean, it's all, it's going to be a group effort and it's going to take a long time.
But are there other workers out there because all of that that you just mentioned, I know we can't tackle the whole thing.
No, it's not you. We will all have a piece of this, it's going to be a community effort to make sure that we adopt our community vision and it will take all of us to do that.
So tonight, do you need a motion from us to, that the Planning Commission approves this letter being sent?
If that's okay. Yeah, so this is just to support the grant.
I'll make the motion that we approve this letter as the Planning Commission and if there's any other questions, to move to approve this letter for Laura.
Do we have a second? Okay. Laura, do you want the vice chair to sign on behalf of the Planning Commission or do you want five signatures?
However you decide is fine.
Can it just be the Planning Commission or do you need specific names?
A signature would be great.
Okay.
If you want to sign individually or if you would like to sign.
Tonight, I think Patty's the one.
On behalf of the commission, the CIC had one person sign on behalf of them.
So this is under the CIC too?
It has, and then I can talk about it on Wednesday at the City Commission, we have a resolution proposed.
Okay, good.
To support the grant, to get, for transportation and land use component.
So I understand, you made a motion, Tom?
I made a motion, he seconded it? To approve this, this letter? And Patty would sign it?
Are we going to do it as a group? Have the chair sign the thing? And that takes care of it?
I think we can do a, we can do a voice vote for this.
Okay.
I just said Patty could, it was, they said, how did we want it?
So you can do it all in favor, yea, nay.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
The question is, should we just have Patty sign it? I'm fine with that too.
And I'm fine with that.
So does the commission? And with that, I don't have any updates for you guys.
No communications?
No communications, although in, there, we're, there's a holiday coming up.
Memorial Day.
Yes, Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. There's also a Planning Commission meeting scheduled.
On that day.
Which is not ideal, so. We're going to cancel that one. But I'll give you a, oh, just so you know, then that, that will be canceled, so you get some time off, but catch your rest because we got more stuff coming towards you.
Okay.
We could hold a meeting up on the Clackamas River, I'll be up there camping, you could all come up there and have a barbecue.
Okay, if there's no new business, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.